We bought their house, yeah. They live in Inlaw.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. They, they live in the Inlaw apartment.
Good for you.
Yeah, it's been nice, yeah. And we did, did a bunch of work on it though.
He wasn't that old, was he? Was it twenty-five?
No, the room over the garage, we completely redid. Ninety-nine is when they finished it.
That long ago, huh?
Yeah.
Wow.
I never lived there. They built it when I was in college.
We're good?
All right. Let's, uh...
Open the meeting?
I have a motion to open the meeting.
Second.
Make a motion, open the meeting.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll do the, um, pretty quick, meeting, uh... Meeting minutes approval of November ninth, twenty twenty-one meeting minutes. So, the motion, yep?
Motion to accept minutes, previous meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so... We'll start with Atwood Estates' bond release and escrow release. So, I believe a town meeting, we're all set. Everything's been accepted for Atwood and Graham, but we'll do one at a time. So, it's a simple motion to have a bond release and an escrow release at the same time.
Make a motion to accept the Atwood Estates' bond release and escrow release.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any of us? Graham Way, same, uh, same procedure, it was voted on at the meeting, so... Motion for a bond release and an escrow release.
Make a motion for Graham Way, bond release, escrow release.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Passes. Next up is... Do you want to do, um, White's Morning, do this in order? Do White's not? That's a use of, uh, so this is Whitestone Village. Use of Georgia Way for emergency access only. All right, we're gonna review and sign the letter. Is anybody here? For Whitestone?
No.
So, Mr. So, uh...
Not Georgia Street.
So, at the last meeting, we had gone back and forth about, um, bringing in Whitestone, uh, Village, or a representative from Whitestone Village to discuss the use of Georgia Street as a exit only, um, and not an entrance point, uh, to the development in the back. Um, at that point in time, we were talking about what we would say in that particular letter based upon the decision that was rendered by the planning board, uh, previously. So, I had drafted the letter that was included in your packet that references the condition and the item in which, um, they were restricted from using the street, uh, as an entrance and only as an exit. Uh, the original letter that I sent you, um, in the email in the packet also contained something about a calming strip, but I actually went out to the site and did a couple of site visits today, and, um, they do in fact have a, um, calming strip. They have a speed bump on their property at that particular location. So, I removed that from the draft that was sent to you previously, but otherwise, it just essentially highlights condition number thirty-eight, which specifies the use of Georgia Street, and that would be sent to the management company as discussed, and hopefully, we can have a representative present, and we can discuss at our meeting in February exactly what the planning board would like to see happen in the future, uh, making sure that that usage of the street is per the conditions.
Is that all right, what you want?
Um, other than I haven't actually seen the letter, but, yeah, I think the spirit of, of what Rebecca has written is, is what it is, and is representative of the original decision and the conditions.
It is clearly not, I, I've been by there and saw the strip and on the left-hand side of George, I mean, it doesn't matter if it's on the left-hand side or the right-hand side, you can still see the white sign, so...
The, the signs, quite honestly, were an afterthought, as we tried to, um, have some enforcement and some awareness down there. It went nowhere. We might as well have driven over them. It certainly drives through them.
So, we're gonna sign this letter, send it out, and then we'll bring them in for a meeting.
Do we need, do we need to specify the date of the meeting in here? It just says in there, next meeting in February.
Would not.
I know, we can update the meeting date, but technically, the meeting date would be the first meeting Tuesday in, um, February, which I believe is February first. Um, unless the board would like to meet, um, which technically be in our next meeting, scheduled meeting, which would be the third Tuesday in January, um, but we will not have a room to meet in because the Board of Selectmen will be meeting on Tuesday because of the holiday on a Monday. Um, so, standard, unless we have a jam-packed agenda, usually just skip to the next one.
Right.
And we don't have any other pressing applications.
If that's how with you guys, I'd rather just do it in February.
I think it's fine, I'm just wondering if we need to say February first, or if, like, are they gonna?
Yep, I can update the meeting to be, uh, Tuesday, February first, at seven P.M.
And that'll give them enough time to respond and get in here. Okay.
Sounds good.
We don't have to adopt a motion for this, do we?
Um, we can motion to approve the letter, uh, as amended, um, and to send that out if you'd like, for the record.
Make a motion to approve the Whitestone Village condominium trust letter to notify, um, the property development company, uh, as amended, to be signed by the planning board and delivered.
Second.
So, motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bobby, are you all ready with that letter?
Yeah, that's good, thank you. Appreciate it.
February first work for you?
What's that?
February first is gonna work for you?
Um, I'll make it work.
Okay. So, next up is twenty-two and twenty-six Wood Street, assesses map, eight lots, two and three A, an informal conversation concerning potential subdivision.
Hi, good evening, I'm Eric Bodman with Millennium Engineering. Um, with me tonight is Sam Colombo from my office, Jamie and Aaron Parsons, one of the property owners, and Catherine and Basil, Basil, um, the other property owner. Um, do you want me to set these plans up, or?
Sure, sure.
This is a good spot, so, I guess people at home need to see these too, right?
Yeah, that's fine, I think it's plenty, you can move around. So, this is just a concept, right?
Yes, it is.
This is the first?
It is, yeah, we'd, we'd like to just, um, we have met earlier with, um, in early November with, uh, Sam and Rebecca, and then through some of the issues we had, and I asked them if we could come in and see you guys because, um, to make this work, we need some waivers, and I don't wanna go through a whole full design script in here, um, and have you have issues with the waivers we're asking for. Right, so... Um, so, I just wanna stop by showing you, this is the, these are the parcels. Um, what originally started, this is where, uh, this is where Jamie, excuse me, I can't read, um... This is where Jamie and Aaron live, and originally, what they wanted to do was try to get another unit back here. This house they're getting is too small for them, and they're growing family, so they wanted to get another house. With all the wetlands and everything in here, we couldn't really make it work. So, um, unfortunately, in the last year or so, um, this is where Jamie grew up and his mother and father live. Um, unfortunately, in the last year or so, both his mother and father have passed away. And so, this is, and this is where Catherine and Basil live. So, based on those changes, um, we came up with some other ideas on how to try to make something work. I'll just go through this real, real quickly with you. Um, so again, this is where Jamie lives, this is, uh, Catherine and Basil's place. Um, so what we did was, we came up with a shared driveway with the, uh, right-of-way, and this is by no means where we think, you know, this is just showing you that we can get two houses up there for, for two lots. To make this work, on this alternative, we'd have to lose the, um, garage, which I'd like to save. So, to do, so to try to save the garage, we decided to go to...
What number is that?
Um, this is two B.
Which one has to be? It's on the bottom right here, it's hard to see it.
So, we decided to try to move the right-of-way to the other side of the parcel. Um, this alternative shows that fifty-foot right-of-way with eighteen foot, um, proposed paved driveway. Um, the, the couple of issues that come up with this one is that, um, we'd have to remove the house now, so instead of removing the garage, we'd have to remove the house. Um, and also, with your subdivision regulations, um, you're supposed to have a twenty-five foot radius on your, where your roads meet, which is great for new roads, but when you put in a road, you put an existing road, um, it doesn't necessarily work. So, on this property, which, uh, my clients don't own, we have no ability to do that at all, 'cause it's a square. Um, on this side, it just doesn't work. So, the alternative to that... Which is two A... Um, which is a concept where, whereby we go to a forty-foot right-of-way, which would be a waiver from your fifty-foot standard. Um, and in this case, with that, um, and, and the other thing is the boundary, the twenty-five foot radius for the right-of-way would be, or what another waiver would be looking for. Um, as you, I, I don't know how familiar you got with the site, but, um, you know, the low point is down here, and it just goes straight uphill here. This is the backside of Nichols Village, um, so it's a pretty significant hill we're working up against.
So, what's the grade on the way up?
Um, it's between, in various spots, it's between, um, eight and twelve, fourteen percent.
I think we have a reg that says that's...
Ten.
Yeah.
And we can, but we can make that for the most part. We can, we can make ten percent work, we'd have to do some retaining laws and whatnot. Um, if we can, again, we'd have to come over and request for another waiver and go to eleven or twelve, but it wouldn't be real, real steep. But that's why we wanted to talk to you guys and get your opinion on...
Was the fire chief at the meeting too?
No. We would address, we would talk to all those people before we went too far to make sure that, um, they all concurred with whatever we were trying to do. So, they all, everybody has to buy into it.
Well, the fire and safety, I, I would've done a couple, you know, one was an eleven, and they had a problem with the eleven percent.
Okay.
So... And where we just, uh, adopted this shared driveway, we'd like to see the, you know, the standard fifty foot.
Okay.
On the road, I don't know if you could do it?
Um, the only way we could do it would be to, we'd do with the house, which we'd obviously prefer not to do.
Would it be a way to rebuild the house, or, if there's, what are we doing with the house?
Um, the house is, would stay right there and be rehabbed.
And what's, what's the setback between the house and the driveway?
Um, on the front?
What do we got from the distance of the house to where the, where the driveway is going in, the road is going in?
Hold on one second.
I've got a little plan, so I don't think I can...
It is just about twenty-five feet. And we talked about this with Sam Jocelyn when we met with them, and, um, obviously, we'd have to speak with him again about this, but he seemed okay with that.
In fact, if you don't, the setback is from that road to where the house, it's like, doesn't really have to be, what, fifteen feet?
The four, the option?
Yeah.
The side setbacks are fifteen.
Right.
And the front, it, front setback is thirty. So, that becomes a... Right.
So, can you get the fifty foot?
Um, not without moving the house or tearing the house down. 'Cause that, that would be closer than what's there now, and so Sam said if we stay at least a five ways, the frontage is now, I'm gonna be okay with that, but if we're closer, we'd have to do something with the house.
And we have another? We have another two plans we have to talk about?
Yep. So, this is the plan I mentioned briefly, where it's on the other side, and we'd have to, um, with the fifty-foot right-of-way, we'd lose the garage. Um, we also get too close to the house here, so we'd have to remove the, the house. That's on, uh, one B.
So, on one B, you still got the house, you just have to move the garage?
No, one B, we'd have to remove the house. We'd have to get too close to the right-of-way here.
The only one that keeps the house is the forty foot on the right side?
Seems like two A.
Oh, hold on a minute, I need, uh...
That says existing dwelling to be removed, though.
The forty foot on the left side, um, which is...
Forty on the left, yeah.
Star and one A.
Yeah.
Um, would lose the garage, and, um, it's, it's close, but it looks like we could keep the house.
How big's the garage?
Um, twenty by twenty, or? Hold on a minute, I can... Uh, it's just about twenty-four by twenty-four.
And if you slid that garage up towards the house and rebuilt it, how old's the garage and what kind of shape is it in?
And lift it and move it over?
It's not in great shape. How old is the garage? Uh, it was built in nineteen eighty-two. Nineteen eighty-two.
Is it built on a slab, or is it built on frost walls?
It's on a slab.
Could it be moved?
Yeah, we, you know, it's in tough shape.
Would you have a problem rebuilding the garage up a little bit further, closer to the house, if it's in that tougher shape? If you do it right, probably really go on frost walls.
Yeah, I mean, that would, you know, the, the intent is to, um, rehab twenty-two, so whoever that is, that would probably be part of the process, um, if we had to demo the garage to put the right-of-way in. Uh, that would be an option for, uh, whoever buys that, that lot. I mean, the, the, the important part of the property really is that, that, that the dwelling itself, um, is, I mean, it's, it's, it was the first house on Wood Street, um, and so it's, it's, it has some historical significance in the town, and to, to knock it down, um, I think would, it would be a shame. I understand, you know, we may have to do what we have to do, but ideally, it would be nice if somebody could rehab it, uh, appreciating the, the historical significance of the property.
I'm not saying knock down the house, I'm saying, you know, do it the right way, try to get the fifty foot in, if the garage is that much in, you know, disarray, and it's only on a slab on grade, and it's probably gonna come down anyways at some point, slide the garage up if that's, you know, closer to the house, we'll get rid of the garage altogether and let somebody else worry about it. But at least you get your fifty-foot right-of-way.
Well, the issue, the issue with the fifty-foot right-of-way is in either, either side, um, that house is gonna have to be...
It gets too close to the house then, right?
I guess it could be relocated too, but it, it would have to, um, because it would be too close to the lot lines.
Puts it on the lot line.
Um, on this one, this is the fifty foot on the side, it is, um, nine feet or so.
And I believe the biggest concern, and again, please correct me if my memory is wrong, but when we had the conversation, I believe one of the concerns that the building commissioner did express is that it did not have the fifty feet, um, not only from a right-of-way standpoint, but from a frontage of a buildable lot. So, the fifty feet would be required in order to make the back lot buildable for the fifty-foot central right-of-way, so...
That's how I'm looking at it.
Um, no, I, I don't remember that. I thought the discussion was that the forty-foot right-of-way develops the frontage for these lots too, right? So, that really doesn't have anything to do, the fifty-foot right-of-way just, either way you do it, it's too close to this house. He was okay as long as these new lines didn't get any closer to the house than the, the house is now from the front setback.
What is it on the top, when you go to the other one, and put the right-of-way above the house, what's the distance between the road and the dwelling, the existing dwelling?
It'd be twenty-three feet or so?
Well, that would work, wouldn't it?
Is that the forty right-of-way though?
That's a forty foot.
I think that's the forty foot right-of-way.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, if you do a forty foot and increase the road to fifty feet, and you're twenty-three away, that would give you, what, thirteen?
Yep.
And what if you buck the road to the right, two feet?
Can it go over?
We can't, 'cause it's not our property. We, we gotta measure to the, to, not the roadway itself, it's to the actual right-of-way, which is the, the property. So, the roadway itself is centered in that, so the roadway is another, um, eleven feet away from the property line.
If we were to increase, you're only missing it by two feet, would we have to go through all the limits?
All I remember is that when I talked to the, the building commissioner briefly, we tried to chat, um, prior to the meeting, and the concern that he mentioned is that he remembered that it was an issue with the fifty-foot right-of-way, not necessarily just because the subdivision rules and regulations require a fifty-foot right-of-way, but that by creating that lot line and separating out that lot, you don't have fifty feet of frontage for a buildable lot in the back. So, even though we have, you know, Seven Star Road, Seven Star Road has forty-eight feet of frontage, and it has over sixty acres of land, and you can't develop that lot because it doesn't have at least fifty feet of frontage for, um, per zoning, I guess, is what the building commissioner had stated to me. So, he, we can certainly have him explore that and maybe write a written opinion, but I do know that that was what he had shared with me earlier this afternoon.
And what about buying some land off of your neighbor to the right? Northern.
Hold on a minute. I don't know, I, I would, just...
There's septics right there.
I would guess it's probably not very viable to do that.
I, I don't wanna, I, I mean, do they even have a question?
I mean, I say, not to jump in, but I, when Eric and Sam and I met with Rebecca and Sam, uh, initially, Eric had originally gone in with a thirty-five foot right-of-way because he had found a comparable lot in Groveland that he went off with for just the initial. And when, in sitting down with Rebecca and Sam, they mentioned this fifty foot was the standard, which we understand, um, but also mentioned another comparable lot, which I can't remember the name of, that either Sam or Rebecca was gonna send to Eric, um, to show that we approved a forty-foot right-of-way similar, um, in town, thirty-five was pushing it too much. So, that's where, why we were even sitting on this four, or came in with this four D.
So, I believe the lot in question was Oakland Terrace, which has two lots, it has two streets, it has Maple, and it has, uh, Oakland Terrace, and that's, again, in our brief discussion today, is what he brought up as well, because Maple is the paper street and has fifty feet, uh, of, of frontage for that right-of-way over on the other side, and the other one did not have fifty feet of frontage, it has forty feet of frontage. However, he had mentioned that because the lot was a contiguous lot with frontage on another piece, parcel, the right-of-way, he could come in the other side. So, he had mentioned today about the lot that you currently own in the back, and how there could be a way, um, the one that's on the other, that, that back lot, because there's, uh, obviously enough frontage to make the lot buildable. But again, it was a brief conversation with the building commissioner, so all I'm suggesting is that before making a, a, a official determination, um, that we get some clarification from him specifically, um, as to what he's, what law that he was referencing earlier today, 'cause I, I would, I would say that, like we discussed, if you're creating the frontage off of, of, of right-of-way, then it, as long as you have enough to create that frontage, and it has more area, and you're creating and subdividing the lot, I would imagine you could still seek a waiver from that, um, being if you could show a hardship, uh, per...
We have plenty of, we have plenty of frontage on the lots, that's, it's not the issue just of width of the right-of-way.
Yes, and it is allowable under the subdivision rules and regulations for waivers under certain hardships, if they can prove that they meet some of the criteria. Um, but I would definitely wanna get some clarification from Sam, just 'cause every single time I look at it, I get more confused as to what he's referencing.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, the, the thing that's different than this, than a lot of other potential subdivisions doing town is, this can never be re-subdivided. And that's obviously part of your shared driveway thing, is this can never be re-subdivided. So, it's not like anybody's ever gonna come in and try to widen the road, not have enough space to widen the road, it just can't be done.
We're just trying to find the path that, you know...
Sure.
Is the right way to do it.
Sure. That's why we're here, we wanna have this discussion.
Sure.
Catherine, Jean Otis, um, if someone could just, maybe on one of those plots, show me what that means, that definition of the fifty? I know you have the hundred and fifty foot, pardon if you mean, right? I don't understand what the fifty, like what that requirement is.
I can show you.
Yep.
So, this is the hundred, so fifty foot, fifty foot wide.
Yep.
So, it needs to be fifty feet wide at the time of the election. And like this one shows it has been forty feet wider to the thousand. So, it's the width of the proposed right-of-way.
So, it doesn't have anything to do with the top plot? It has the...
Fifty foot, the reg.
Okay.
Fifty foot, fifty feet is the, the new...
Thank you.
The new reg. John, do you have anything?
So, it sounds like I should have another conversation with Sam.
With Sam. I, I agree, I mean, it's...
Have a conversation with Sam and get his input, and then maybe come back again, update you guys, and...
And hopefully, we have the full board here.
Yeah, I, I, I will, I will have a more full, detailed conversation with him now that we see the plans too, and hearing a little bit more background, and having my memory refreshed is exactly what, what we were looking at prior to...
The grading could be done with, like he, like he said, he can, I'm not worried about the grade, and you can always pick it up and move it with walls and...
The only other issue will be the, um, the turnaround for, for the cat.
Trucks, yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
That may not be enough.
Right, and we can, we can make that anyway the fire chief does. Typically, we'd go and talk to the fire chief and whatever they want, is what they get.
What is the size of that turnaround space?
The, uh, the whole circle, which is the right-of-way, is a hundred and thirty feet.
So, are you proposing to pave a...
No, what we're paving is about twenty, this turnaround is twenty by... It would be forty-five feet or so, twenty by forty-five. So, the idea would be if, uh, anybody, the fire truck, you mean, here, that come up to here, and then back here, and come out.
It may...
Which we'll confirm with the fire chief, whatever.
Right, right.
It's pretty standard that we have to give the fire chief whatever they want.
He may, well, he may want you to pave the whole circle, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that would seem...
Almost like a cul-de-sac, so they could just...
Yeah. That would seem excessive, but, you know, whatever...
And then run the driveways off of that.
Whatever makes them happy.
Well, he's gonna let you know.
Would there be any drainage associated with such, with the grades as they are?
So, yes, we have to, um, as part of your regulation, we have to address storm water. So, um, we're in the process, so we're, we're, in the process of, um, we'll be digging testes in the next couple of weeks out here, and here, and make sure that they're current. pits in the next couple of weeks out here, and here, and make sure that they perk, so we can actually build houses out there. And then we'll have to do some stormwater down in here somewhere, get, get some of the water off the road, maybe catch some here and pump it up that way.
So you'll pump it up to a pond?
Well, we may have to, the, the very, where the road is, we, uh, where it meets Wood Street, we may have to pump that up to a, we'll do some sort of detention pond or underground storage or something.
Infiltrator in the middle?
Yeah, something, yep.
And we have, you know, these are gonna be septic systems, obviously.
Yes, yep.
And you have a, we don't, not sure if it's, where it's gonna perk and if it's gonna perk.
Yeah, right, it, well, I think it's gonna perk only because there's houses there now, but there's no guarantee, and that's why we're gonna, we're gonna do it. That's why we wanted to go through this process and do the test pits and everything, make sure that what we're talking about is actually, you know, feasible.
Yeah, I, I think, I want to talk to Sam as well on some clarity.
Sure.
I mean, you spoke to him, and we don't know, so...
Right, right.
Does the board have it, John, DJ, have anything to...
No, I just was gonna ask about the fifty, on that fifty-foot right-of-way, if there was some type of waiver, how much, what footage do you need in order to not remove the house? To sa-, to save the house? Is the forty-foot just, just barely gets you?
About forty feet, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
The forty feet makes it, or is that, is that even on the edge too?
Forty, forty feet is on the edge.
Okay.
It's on the edge. But, um, based on my discussion with Sam, I believe that works, based on what he had described.
He was okay with the forty?
Go through all this with him to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, because you just said that, when I asked-
The road gets closer to the butter, right?
You know, what frontage is required for subdivision, what's the minimum frontage required for a subdivision, would be the right-of-way, or that's within stop process, but we can definitely get more clarification on that.
Works on one B. Maybe you're gonna lose the garage.
For one, yeah, one, one D.
One B was too close to the house.
Takes the house to get removed.
Okay. You know, we'll talk to Sam.
Yeah.
I'd say, wanna come back in February?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
It's, this is a tough lot.
It is, it's not a-
Keep the house, and to make the two in the back, and...
Yeah, once we got the survey done and wetlands and all that, it's not a, you know, it's not a real easy situation.
Still, you know, you still got the hurdle of stormwater management, too.
Right, and that'll depend on what the test pits come up with and all that, so, yep.
Do you guys have any, uh?
Those are the big ones.
No, I don't think so. I think ultimately, we're just trying to keep our little family cul-de-sac together and the best we can.
I understand that, it's just, we're gonna see if it's allowable from us when we talk to the, when we talk to the building inspector.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
So February, we'll plan on February first, what then?
It's the first February, first Monday and Tuesday, first Tuesday in February, or second?
The first Tuesday.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
Um, the only other thing is just to let you know that, um, with my new role, I am, um, have been helping out with the planning board. Um, however, in conversations in our department, um, Annie has graciously agreed to take on, um, the additional duties of the town planner. She is currently our environmental program coordinator and works closely with the conservation commission, um, because there's a lot of overlap in those types of duties and the projects that we see, um, we thought it'd be a, a great fit, and, and Annie, as, as, I know Brad's met Annie before, is absolutely spectacular, and I couldn't be happier, um, that she agreed to take on this new role, and I think it's gonna be great, and I know that you're all just gonna love her.
All right, welcome, Annie.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, everyone. I'm excited.
And I think we're gonna, motion for adjournment. Can I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Motion adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.